We're going to call the Select Board meeting of September 25th to order at 7:02. Open session, public meetings are subject to being videotaped. Your image and voice may be recorded. We have approval of, is it just August 28th? Or is it?
They're all in the folder.
The 11th?
I was going to say, last I looked at, I saw the word "draft" on a couple of them. I noticed that when I opened the folder now, the word "draft" is not on there.
Oh, I didn't get a chance to read the 11th then.
Do you want us to carry the 11th over to next meeting?
I think it's August 28th that you didn't have a chance to read, because that's what I just finished with September 11th.
Oh, September 11th.
Yeah, August 28th and September 11th.
Because, yes.
And there are no minutes for the 21st, because there wasn't, like, we didn't have any deliberation or discussion. It was just a presentation that Chris and I attended and asked a couple of questions, but there was no conversation.
That's right. So, yeah, we don't really need minutes for that one. So, we're going to make a motion to approve September 11th?
You want to look at the 28th again before we approve those? You're fine. I'm fine with that. I will make a motion to approve the minutes for the 11th.
I'll second it.
And anything else? And we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. We're up to general public comment already.
Don't all speak at once.
Okay. Seeing none, then we'll move on to our, the 7:00 PM continuation of the Earthworks public hearing that was opened on July 24th regarding the application filed by Michelle Bisconi on behalf of Berlin Realty Land Trust for permission to import 2,100 cubic yards of earth material at 231 Sawyer Hill Road. And I assume we're going to continue that until?
My recommendation is to continue it to 10:23, to move it ahead a month until she's ready to come back with the outdoor portion of the arena. So, that way she doesn't have to re-advertise and notify about ours.
Okay. So, continued to August, oh, August, October 23rd at 7:00 PM?
Yes, please.
Okay.
And we're thinking she still needs to import soil, because she was thinking at one point she was just going to move soil from one part of her land to another.
Correct. For the?
Restoration plan?
No, it was gravel that she was bringing in.
For the outdoor part, she needs the gravel.
Okay.
So, but she's doing the indoor part of the arena right now, so not needed at this time.
And do we need to vote for this?
Yes, please.
Yes, I would do a motion to postpone the hearing until the 23rd of October.
Okay.
That's fine.
And that's a second. So, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. ConCon did receive her plan to restore what she had done, and they were fine with it, so.
Okay.
And Carolyn actually did sign off on the building permit, so she's able to move forward with the indoor portion upon receiving that plan.
Okay. All right, then. We will move on to the General Department update, which is fire. Good evening.
All right. My report has the breakdown for the last couple of months of the activity for fire and EMS responses, and also for the fire prevention activity. Kind of noted in that is that the last three months remain kind of busy for the fire EMS department. Responses continue to stay steady, and unfortunately severity of the incidents remained high as well. While a lot of the brush fires fell off due to our wet weather, we had several motor vehicle accidents that resulted in serious injuries with multiple ambulances needed. And these occurred not only on the interstate, but in town as well. As I'm sure you're well aware, gas leaks were also frequent this summer. One day we did actually have two gas leaks in two different parts of town. They were unrelated and not connected in any way. We've had several small fires, one being at the elementary school resulting in the sprinkler system being taken out of service. We also saw another train derailment, which you're painfully aware of, which we handled with mitigation. Efforts have almost been completed. In regards to the fire at the elementary school, we have instituted a fire watch detail for life safety purposes when school is in session. This fire watch will remain in effect until repairs are made, which may take up to two to three more months before that's completed. Luckily, we found out the fire watch details are being reimbursed through the school's insurance carrier, so it's not going to affect the town in any way, because that'll get reimbursed. And the latest update that I had on that is with the supplies that they have and what they're replacing, that's where that two to three months come in that they think it's going to take to actually make those repairs. We continue to attempt to work with CSX to obtain a contact for notification of incidents and to work with in the event of future train or track issues. Recently, the tracks were repaved at Linden Street, Jones Road, and Crosby Road crossings, as I'm sure you're all aware of. And we were notified on that and kept in the loop. Members of the department conducted training through the summer to complete the Nero's law requirement. This training was required by OEMS to have all EMS providers train on treating police dogs that may be injured in the line of duty. This involved an online didactic portion followed by a two-hour practical session with a dog and a veterinarian that was present. I'm happy to report that all the staff in the fire EMS department with responsibilities on the ambulance have completed this training. I believe this law is in effect, and we have until, in the Commonwealth, until, I believe it's February of next year, to complete the training. We're one of the few departments that pretty much everybody's completed that training already. So, kind of very proud of everybody for stepping up and doing that. We are continuing to move forward with hiring a few more call firefighters. We have one that is completing their physical, and two that are in the background check right now. These have been slow to complete, but it's an important process to ensure that we hire quality and trusted employees within the department. So, with everything going on at the police department and stuff, and what they're tied up with and stuff, that background check that we're doing with them takes a little bit of time. So, just kind of working through that process. For initiatives, we continue to see an increase in interest in the home safety inspections. We've received a lot of interest from residents on Meadowbrook Village Development and the Highland Ridge Development. This is due in part to neighbors spreading the word to each other of the benefits of the program. Unfortunately, we have not seen the interest in a lot of our seniors who live in single-family houses, which we identified as one of our main target populations. And we're just asking for the council engaging and other departments that deal with the elderly to spread the word when meeting with the residents. Obviously, anything we can do to kind of make them safer and to be able to work with them is a great thing. I did spend a few hours last meeting with Neshoba Neighbors in assisting in a training program that they had as they meet with the residents on signs of medical conditions and emergencies they may see. It's a fantastic group. I know they've been before you in the past to explain their role, and they seem to be covering a need of service for some of our elderly residents, and we're happy to assist them in any way we can. Great group of people. I know we have some residents in town that volunteer for them. It was a great training session. We had Neshoba Valley Regional Dispatch Center that was there to go over calling 911 and what would be expected of them. And they had some great questions, and I think it was a very positive training experience for them. I personally completed some training over the summer with the Department of Fire Services being a new chief in the state. And this was to review what services are available to the Berlin Fire and EMS Department, new chief officers, in the Commonwealth, and potential grant opportunities. So, kind of looking at those in the future as we go forward to be able to apply for some additional grants for any of the training or equipment that we may need. Continuing to look at staffing in the department, we've had many open shifts where either one firefighter or EMT is on duty, or in some cases we have not had anybody on duty where it's just been the call department coming in. It's not ideal for the service that we want to provide for our residents and visitors. We're encouraging people to take open shifts and cover what they can, and I think we're seeing a little bit with the, with covering the school and the open shifts and stuff is kind of putting a little bit of a strain on the members. But kind of looking at what we can do to kind of increase our staff. We haven't missed too many calls during the, during the whole summer. There might have been two or three calls that we actually missed that mutual aid had to rely, that we had to rely on. Just an update, we have Carter Store that's moving into 20 Highland Commons. Work has begun, and permits have been issued. Burn Memorial School has had its annual inspection completed to include all the classrooms, emergency egress, storage rooms, and facility systems. A few minor issues were brought up, and I said minor just in the fact that there, the facility maintenance division is actually working on those with some of the doors that have some closure issues and some storage issues, but nothing that is an immediate concern that has to, you know, be dealt with immediately or have the school shut down or anything like that. So, that's my report for the last couple of months and where we're at.
Very good.
I'm trying to remember a year where there were not door closure issues at the schools. I mean, I don't think it's the same door all the time, and there's been one on it, you know, with the number of doors they have, by the time you get to the, like, last door in the list, the first door in the list is probably having problems again.
You're right, exactly.
You have kids going in and out of those doors on a pretty regular basis, so, yeah. Sort of why I chuckled at those.
Remember the kindergarten doors when they first built the school? The cement outside the door, those doors? You know, the cement was going in towards the building, so then they had water in the building too. Yeah. And questions?
All right.
So, general question. You mentioned a couple of gas leaks.
Yes.
When there's a gas leak caused by human error, are they responsible for paying, like, you to be there and all these other departments that need to be there?
Yeah, in a roundabout way, yes. Basically, the way the hazmat situation works for what they call the Hazwafer Bill and stuff in the, in the United States is that the, whoever's the owner or transporting agency is responsible for the cleanup efforts. What I'm kind of working through in meeting with the state and stuff and going through, it's a little different than in New Hampshire where Massachusetts, where broken accorations with the state hazmat team. We did notify them, we utilized them, and I'm trying to figure out how that works with the billing process in order to actually submit a bill to the insurance carrier, if you will, that would be responsible for that. Use an example of on the highway, if it was a tanker truck that tipped over, they would be responsible for that cleanup of that material and, if you will, at the end, the entire invoice from everybody that responded from, from our municipality right up to the state organization and the federal employees would be covered under that bill that would be submitted, and I believe that would go through the hazmat district. And that's the difference that I'm working on, is trying to figure out if we can generate that bill, because only one can be sent. In New Hampshire, it was by the municipality. Down here, I believe it's by the state through the hazmat district that you're in.
Okay. The CSX, I am thrilled that it has been paved, but it also pains me because I look at the amount of trash that is still there on the sides of the tracks. Do you know if CSX has any plans to come pick up their trash?
I'm not exactly sure where they sit with that. I know I have talked to them specifically, and when I say I've talked to them, it's representatives that have been at the scene. I'm not sure if they're managers or in leadership. But I've asked about getting rid of the railroad ties, the wooden, yep. And they pretty much said probably they're going to stay, because it's on their property, and they don't have any place to put it, because it sounds like no matter where they try to store those, every community has an issue with them because of the creosote that's in them.
Yeah. I mean, I noticed there's a bunch of, there's like buckets and just spare metal that's there. Will they eventually pick up the rocks that are on South Street? I mean, I know that they kind of?
South and Jones.
South and Jones, that they pushed them back a little bit, because literally you're like halfway in the road, so you could do this.
Yeah. I'm assuming those are going to get spread, and they're going to have to clean those up, but I'll try to follow through, and I'll work with Fred Cummings as well, because I know he has a better contact for, if you will, the maintenance for the road and that kind of stuff. So, I'll find out and get, kind of let them know that we want that kind of cleaned up and taken care of, along with the trash as well.
Yeah. How are we doing on the past fire receivables?
You mean EMS?
EMS. Oh, EMS. I am hoping to have that on the agenda in October, either, probably not next week, but hopefully the week after, or the meeting after, rather.
Okay.
We've been working on it, and we've had some discussions.
Are we at least getting current bills out, even if we're not collecting aggressively the things that aren't getting paid?
Yes. The, as we complete the incident report and stuff, it gets submitted through the state, and at that point, our EMS coordinator is actually submitting that to the billing company and stuff to get sent out. What we're trying to do is especially, we've kind of picked up the speed on trying to get those out, because for motor vehicle accidents, for the insurance from the, whichever automobile insurance they have, they only pay out a certain amount of money until they shut that off. And that's one of the easiest ways for us to get reimbursement for, so we try to get the bill out quickly before the hospital submit their bill, so we can get reimbursed.
Do you have any update on the two rusting pieces of vehicles that are sitting in the buildings over there?
I don't have an update on the knots specifically. I'm trying to figure out where we sit with that, and from what I understand, there's an ownership question on that, as to who owns it. And I'm trying to work through that to see if I can find any paperwork, documentation, that type of thing. And I'm going to, I'm trying to work with the association to try to work with them on it, where it's kind of in a town building, and if it's not owned by us, that's obviously an issue. But I have, I'm going to say that I haven't moved that far forward on that. And the other one, I'm kind of looking at getting that one out so that we can actually, if you will, sell it, or at least get it off of our rules somehow. And I'm not sure what the best way is to actually get rid of that truck, if selling it is going to be the way to go, or if just scrapping it. So, I'm kind of researching that right now with the pump that's on that truck. The pump is in very rough shape, meaning that it really can't be serviced. So, from a value standpoint, I'm not sure if there's any value in selling the truck, so I'm just trying to find a home for that so that we can actually get rid of it and send it on its way.
I like that. And do you want to give a plug for your open house on October 7th?
Yes, that was the next thing I was going to do before I left the seat, is October 7th is our open house from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. So, I encourage anybody that's out there that's listening, please come down. We're going to have events. There's going to be different demonstrations on auto extrication, kitchen fires. There's a home escape plan that's going on. We're going to have food that's there. And we just want, we want the community to come in and see the firefighters and see the fire apparatus that they have, and be able to answer questions. Staff will be there to answer whatever questions they have, visit with them. I will have the Dalmatian there. Lily will be there to greet people, as well as I will be as well. But, yeah, we encourage everybody to come, so we're kind of looking forward to it. We hope not that it's going to be good weather, but, yeah, please come and please get involved.
You know those commercials that you see on TV, you know, where it's like, "Fire, fire in the frying pan, people freak," and then you see the fire officer going over and throwing a, do those work? Are those legit? Any idea?
In a matter?
Well, I've been tempted to buy one, but I'm like?
Throw wood on it?
So, so, you know, here, you know, somebody's cooking, and, "Oh, my God, the pan's on fire." And, you know, they'll go over, and there's like a blanket sitting up there, and they, the fireman takes it out and literally drops it on the fire, and it goes out instantly, and they've done that. They even do that with grills that are like?
It's, it does actually work. It's the same thing as putting a lid over the fire. And as a matter of fact, during the demonstration that day, my hope is to be able to show a actual, we'll actually have a grease fire on a stove, and we'll, we'll actually hopefully throw some water on it to show what water will do, which will be disastrous.
Don't?
Yep.
Demonstration, otherwise I need to notify the insurance.
But the hope is to show what a cover can do, and that's what that blanket is doing. It does actually work. If you can, what you end up doing is you snuff the fire off by taking the oxygen away from the fire during that reaction that it's having. So, it does actually work. It is a safer way than trying to throw bacon soda on it or trying to throw water on it, obviously. But another thing that'll work is if you have one of the home dry chemical extinguishers that you can hit on and stuff, that will also put it out, because that'll put a blanket across the top of it of that fire, if you will, dust, for lack of a better description as what's in there, which will do the same thing. What you want to be careful of is just that reignition, because that oil is going to be so hot. If you remove the blanket, or if you stir that oil at all, it can, it can flare right back up again.
Okay.
So, we always say, if it does happen, make sure you call the fire department, dial 911, and let us come and just make sure it's out.
Okay. All right. Good to know. Thank you.
You mentioned home safety assessments. How would someone, if someone wants to get one done, what's the best way to reach out for that?
They can email myself, they can email John Polino, Lieutenant John Polino, or firefighter Michelle Devoe. Or they can call the station and speak to one of us, or even Abby, Fiona, they can call her, and she'll, she'll direct them in the right way for the right person. So, that, we'll schedule those as close as we can. Obviously, some of the other inspections kind of take a priority and stuff, but we'll get in, and we've, we've had very good luck with getting in, usually the same week to visit with people and go through with them.
You know, social media doesn't really get to quite the right target population, but maybe at least on the towns, social media accounts, we sort of just list that with a phone number and an email address would probably help.
I am also hoping to update the website for the fire department through the towns, you know, portal and stuff, to kind of make it a little more user-friendly, to be able to choose those things. It's a little bit confusing right now, but we're working on trying to modify that so they can hopefully get through on that as well, or at least get the information of who they can call.
Or flyer. You could always put it up, I'm sure, at the general store, indoor 19 Carter, because I think if you're looking at that population, those two you're going to hit.
Perfect.
ConCon.
Are you getting meetings with the other chiefs that we do mutual aid on a regular basis?
Yes. As a matter of fact, I forgot to put that in my report, but I have been collaborating with them and meeting with them. We had a chief's meeting for our district last week that I attended up in Townsend, because we go that far north. And I've met with the area chiefs of, you know, right around us, between Hudson, Southborough, and Northborough. Obviously, Boylston and Bolton, I get together with on a regular basis. So, you know, kind of talking about some of those regional things that we can do together for grants and getting some more, if you will, resources for all the departments.
It's my understanding for fire department budgets, that there's actually a direct correlation between the amount of both money we spend and what expected response times can be. You know, to get, to guarantee that there is someone at the house within one minute is, you know, millions of dollars. To get someone there within a half hour is not much.
Right.
Is there sort of a target you, you're aiming for that, like, if we're evaluating whether or not we're getting, we should be getting for the money we're spending? How much would the sort of average response time should be?
The, the average response time for, if you will, a medical emergency is anywhere from four to six minutes is basically what the national standard is for us. And if we, if we have bodies in the station, if I have two people that are on duty that can respond on that ambulance, we can reach most occupants within that four to six minutes of when we receive the tone. You know, the same thing applies to any type of a building fire or a, you know, hazardous materials incident. The quicker that we get there, the better the outcome is going to be. And again, with having that staff on duty, we can, we can, we can make it very quick to the, to any address in town. One of the things that we've done is through our mutual aid agreements is we've started what we call automatic aid, which is where if someone calls and says their house is on fire over on Marlboro Road, the response plan is supposed to include, if you will, an engine from Hudson and one from, I believe it's Northborough that's coming in. And that's kind of bolstering our response, so within that first 10 minutes, not only do we have the two people that are on duty, but we have the rest of that complement coming in too, to build out what we need. More specific towards the cost to go with that, I'm kind of trying to look at the cost to see what it will be to have that staff 24/7, you know, with two people that are on duty, if you will, 24/7, to see what that cost comes out to be and where we're at right now.
And so, we've moved our department over the years from call to per diem.
Correct.
Is there any sort of increased benefit if we go from like per diem to salaried staff?
Yes.
Because you're talking about a lot of shifts going on field, and I think that's less of a problem if it's a full-time employee for us, right?
Yes. It's, it becomes one of those things, I kind of, I spoke to Kristen a little bit about this, about implementing a step or a tiered step to that, just because if I was to go to, I have two full-time employees right now that kind of work a rotating shift, and they cover, if you will, the day. So, I only need one per diem person during the day, and I, most of the time that gets covered, that's not an issue. It's usually the nights, and occasionally on the weekends that we have a problem. And if I was to build out to have full-time staff around the clock, I would need eight full-time positions to do that. I have two right now that cover that, so I would need six additional. And it's kind of a long-winded answer, and I apologize for that. But to bring six people on all at once would be extremely cumbersome. So, if I did two at a time over a six-month period, I could train them and have that full-time staff that is almost 24/7. I have one person that's on duty with a per diem person, and building up to that, you know, six months later, hiring two additional ones, and then two after that would bring us to the point where we have 24/7 coverage, and I'd have the per diem slash call department that can cover vacation days, training days, that type of thing. And it would give us a, if you will, a set salary, you know, where we know we have people that are covering 24/7.
I'd be almost, if it could be as much, if it's not too much work, back of envelope when you're doing the budget, like, how much more does it go from on, from, from the per diems to go full-time? Because it might be that we can only afford to do one or two of those per year, not per six months to get to that point.
Correct, correct, yep.
But I'd at least have, like, to have a sense of like how much more that costs, because I also think there might be at least an emotional and, and work-related cost with, when you're filling the per diem shifts, the constant work to find them, you're constantly trying to hire, that, at least in my universe, I think someone who's full-time dedicated is more likely to be here longer than a per diem person who might be looking for a full-time job somewhere else.
Correct.
And so, your churn might be a little bit less, and a lot of people who understand the town a little bit better and deeper if there, if there was more full-time.
Yes. And I will say, two of my call candidates that are coming on right now, I have no doubt that I will lose them to a full-time department at some point, because they're young, they're motivated, they're gung-ho, and there are a lot of open jobs that are out there, and I believe this is going to be where their, their career wants to be.
One final question.
That was my, that was my last question.
The bunkhouse upstairs, did you ever get to a structural engineer or an architect to get plans and/or cost?
We did. We, we actually just received the plans, I think, a week and a half ago. We just had a meeting last week to kind of go over that with the architect and talk about what that was going to look like. Do you want me to go ahead and share?
Please, feel free.
So, the?
That's an evil laugh.
Yeah, well?
I know that laugh.
Yes. The cost on it was quite a bit more than I thought it was going to be. The estimated cost on it is $1.7 million, which, yeah, was, it was, it was a lot more than I was anticipating. And we, we looked at the costs and stuff, and that's based on the, if you will, the equation that they have for the HVAC, the electricians, the plumbers to come in. One of the things that we talked about is the building being, you know, the way it is, and he said there wasn't much prep that was done to prepare it for a second floor. There were some pipes that went up there, but beyond that, there wasn't much more, so there's a lot of, a little bit of work they have to do. We took a look at it, and it builds us, the, the plan that we have would build this out, I'm going to say for the next 50 years. And it's, it's got a, it's got a kitchen facility, a day room, and I think it has, I believe it was 10 bedrooms that it actually has that's in there. Now, we wouldn't need 10 bedrooms upfront, and we talked about kind of phasing the project in, doing like, you know, five bedrooms. And the problem is, is that it doesn't save you a whole lot not to do five other bedrooms just because they're already here and, you know, that, but the, the entire build-out of that was at the $1.7 million, and that, that was with an increase for next year, I believe, or for the next year.
Yeah. I, I, well, he said, he had 1.85, but he said that was high. He said it's probably more like 1.7, but he doesn't like to come in low and have it be higher. And it has a 12-month escalator in it.
Yep, that's what it was.
One of the things you pointed out, though, was having those extra dormitories would be quite useful in an emergency, not just for regular EMS, but fire, highway?
Yes.
You know, when, when Lemonster floods again and I can't go anywhere. You know, I mean, God forbid, we've had all kinds of crazy disasters, so it's, you know, I mean, God forbid, we've had all kinds of crazy disasters. So it's, you know, likely would get use, but the issue is where do you find the funding?
Yeah.
Obviously, and it, we allocated or conditionally allocated the $200,000 in the ARPA funding for it. That's not going to do it. We would look to mitigation funding perhaps in part, but even more importantly, the state is actually coming out with an MSBA for municipal, for municipal side, for municipal facilities. This is something that's being pushed heavily by the legislator, legislation right now, to basically fund primarily public safety buildings. So I think we should continue with the architectural plans and build out and be shovel-ready for that program and see what we can do there.
Right. Because any grant we apply for, to say the town's already has $200,000 dedicated towards it, will give us a few points towards awards.
Correct. We have a match and we have plans.
Yep.
And there isn't any portion of it that you could say, besides the bunks, that you could say, maybe we don't need this right now?
Yeah. It's one of those things. It's, you know, kind of looking at it. It's, and, and that's one of the things, like, the staircase that goes up there is actually the bunk room that we have for the firefighters right now. And it is one of the tough selling points that I have, is that it, where I don't have separate living quarters, it, it's tough bringing in the diversity into the apartment when you kind of come through and you show them where they're going to be, and it's that instant, like, really, seriously, this, you know, and it, so it's kind of, you know, trying to get to that point to have that diversity, to bring more women into the fire service and stuff. And, you know, just picking on, you know, Michelle and Jasmine that I have as my female firefighters, they do a phenomenal job. And I would love to have more of them. And I will freely admit, even they are leery of, of, of taking, you know, night shifts here and stuff, just because of the way the facilities are. So this is a benefit to put that in there, but it's trying to figure out, and I'm working with the architect to say, how can we phase it? And what does it look like if we do that?
Right.
And what are the costs with that? Even though it, I don't want to say it's going to cost more, maybe more problematic, but if it's more stable for the tax rate and it's more stable for the budget process, obviously it's better that way. So hopefully, we'll, we'll have something to at least show what that's going to look like if we phase that in.
Okay.
I just, I don't know what that's going to look like as, as to how we phase that in, but yeah, we're at least moving forward with it with the architect.
Yeah. Good. Any other questions?
No, it was great. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Have a good night, chief.
You as well.
One thing I wanted to add, too. I think this, this is a good lesson for us too in future planning. The architect did note, if we had done the build-out at the time we built the building, it would have been about $300,000. So, you know, just things to think about. Obviously, we want to save resources, but we want to have an eye to the future as well.
Same with solar and highway.
Well, I'm thinking like, didn't we do the building like 30 years ago?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, $300,000, that could be about equal to 1.7 million now.
I think he did it in today's dollars. Yeah, is my understanding. But just, you know, even in the highway and things like that, you know, obviously wanting to be resource-conscious, but make sure that we're planning for the future.
It is true. The town has occasionally done things that are penny-wise and pound-foolish. You know, sometimes fiscally conservative is really good, and 80% of the time it does as well. And so I think we're still batting better than we need to, but there are definitely times we do that.
Yep. Okay. So, would you like to give us your town administrator report?
I would. There's a lot going on. It is budget season, again, believe it or not. The FinCom held their FY '25 budget kickoff meeting on the 13th, and they will be meeting again on the 4th to work on the calendar and the forms and the packet that goes out to boards, committees, and department heads. FY '23 employee performance appraisals are underway and are due back October 13th. Capital project forms have gone back and are due October 31st. I have recommended against holding a fall/winter town meeting and instead pushing the articles to the May annual town meeting, which I checked, it'll actually be a little later. It'll be May 6th meeting, because that is the first Monday in May this year. It'll actually save us money. It'll give us some more time to certify free cash. We've had a lot of changes on our financial team. In fact, half of the financial team has changed this year. And that will give us more time to finalize the River Bridge negotiations, which are really what was driving the need for that fall/winter town meeting. And I actually have reached out and did have some brief conversations with the folks at River Bridge, and they were actually somewhat relieved because we were running up against a time crunch. And so we'll be able to get everything resolved for May. As part of the budget season, we were invited to tour the regional schools on October 19th to look at conditions and space needs. It was actually the first time I was in Boylston Elementary. So it's good for comparison purposes to understand the different needs of the different schools. And I plan to be a lot more involved, hopefully attending more school committee meetings this fall, and just understanding the overall budget needs as the district, as the district needs. And Chris Keefe and I were invited to sit on this joint, I guess, work group. We're calling it a work group, but I guess it's just a group. I don't know what the proper word is. The school committee has invited the town administrators and the chairs of the select board to meet beginning in October. I have recommended that a representative from each of the FinComs be added to that meeting. And I did actually speak with Carol Costello about that today. So we'll see if we can get them added. So a lot going on there. La, was it last Thursday? Nope, two Thursdays ago, I guess. We had the community needs assessment findings that were presented from UMass Boston. And I just wanted to thank both social services director, Victoria, and the UMass Boston team for presenting the study. It's provided some valuable information on the community to guide some of our future policy and programming decisions, and also provide data that will allow us to apply for grants. Some of the topics that were discussed were affordability, communication, creating accessible spaces, aging in place, demand for services and facilities and transportation needs. So did provide some pretty key data for the town. I was invited to attend the REC committee on the 13th, where the committee voted to request relocation of the pavilion from the pond side of South Commons to what they're calling the south side of South Commons, which is over by the fields. The next step, as I've advised them to do, is to meet with Community Preservation, as they are the funding agency or entity. And if it's approved, town meeting would need to vote on the change in May of the location. So even though it was not in the motion or the article, it was in the description, and it was very clearly described on town meeting floor what the location was. So I did confirm with legal counsel that they strongly recommend we revoke, because someone could contest it and say, I wouldn't have voted for it at X location. So that is going to tie us up a little bit, or slow us down a little bit, rather. Personnel, I am pleased to report that the candidate we had made an offer to has accepted. And that will be on the October 2nd meeting for appointment for the Assistant Treasurer/Collector. We also filled the eight-hour-per-week transfer station attendant position that we've been looking to fill for quite some time. So we welcome Amy Spencer as our new employee. And Victoria is currently going through assessing a candidate who applied for the per diem council on aging van driver position. Rides do continue to be limited at this time due to staffing issues. Road engineering funding. So I'm excited to report, we've gone into our first road engineering project. It's $150,000 in ARPA funding that the board allocated to prepare the town to apply for grants. And we will be applying for a complete streets grant this fall to improve pedestrian safety and connectivity in the center of town. The grant is estimated to be about $400,000. That includes new sidewalks, ADA compliant access ramps, crosswalks, and visibility improvements along Woodward, Carter, and Central Street. Also some bike racks in or around the town common or the municipal offices. So this is actually the first grant the town will be applying for under the Complete Streets program, since we did the prioritization plan back in 2016. So very exciting. Howard Stein Hudson is helping us prepare that application and doing the design for us. And we actually sat down and went through all of the projects, some of which actually have gotten done on their own. And this appeared to be the best use of funds. And we also, of course, have the Route 62 corridor study, the center study, it really kind of, the Bullard House, it just ties everything really nicely together. So they think we have a very strong application if we can put some Chapter 90 funding towards paving those roads, once these improvements are made. So they're estimating we need to put in about $160,000 in Chapter 90 funding. The town currently has about $600,000 in Chapter 90. They'll get another two next year. And then there's about another 250 in paving articles that there's funding there. So, and I, I asked Fred, I said, you know, how does this, those roads rate to other roads that you were intending on paving? Because I don't want to bump other roads. And he said they're right up there with some of the roads that are most in need of paving in town. So if we can get the money for that, I think that'll be really good. I will pass over the third-floor renovation, since we talked about that. Municipal facilities study and reuse plan. So we have contracted with a consulting firm to survey conditions, estimate capital improvements, including energy upgrades, and make recommendations on vacant space and underutilized space in town-owned buildings and facilities. So I had an initial call with the consultants, and they sent over a lot of work. So one of them is pre-walk-through questionnaires. So thank, many thanks that Peg, Janet Lamy, and Amy Grenier have agreed to assist with the project in addition to Fred. So we'll be getting together with that group and the consultant to work on those pre-survey questionnaires. And then they will, are hoping to do building walkthroughs in late October. What do we got here? Barnes Hill Road. Interesting. The Central Mass Regional Planning Commission conducted a traffic study over on Barnes Hill Road at the request of the board after speaking with some residents from July 13th to August 3rd. On a few dates, the data is actually high enough to potentially qualify for a heavy commercial vehicle exclusion. I will note that is a time when there was almost no trucking activity going on up there. So that is actually sort of a natural trucking route at times. And it is relatively narrow and a potential issue. So the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission was fine enough to provide me with a letter that another city used for applying for this exemption. But I did meet with Jack, I always say his last name wrong, Malali?
I think so.
Malali?
The way he said it, though, is a little different than what I was saying, so I'm not sure.
Yeah. And he asked, actually, when, when things start kind of ramping back up this fall, if perhaps we could do another traffic count that might make our case a little bit stronger. I did reach out to CMRPC and heard back today that they actually don't mind coming back out this fall, and they think that might be better to wait until we have better data to make a stronger case. So we'll be looking at that. Moving on with more ARPA money. You appropriated $55,000 in ARPA funding for improvements at Bullard House and 1870 Town Hall. I've met with the Historical Commission and their architect, and it became very clear that there are drainage issues between the sites, and they are interconnected. Before we can do any kind of parking up at 1870 or walkway between the buildings, we have to take a comprehensive look at what's going on site-wide, site, I guess, site-wise, site-wide, both work. Because there is water pooling in the basement of the Bullard House, and it is coming, at least in part, down the hill from 1870. So TFM structural engineers have been brought in to propose some improvements to look at the flooding in the basement and stabilize the site, so that we can do some future work there. I had a really interesting conversation with Rob Anderson from Mass Development about the PACE program on Friday. So this is a state funding program that provides energy efficiency upgrades for commercial buildings. It's basically a public-private partnership between the town, Mass Development, which is a state funding agency, and a business owner. They've identified the Solomon Pond Mall as potentially a, an excellent site for this program. It can provide roofing upgrades if you put solar on, windows, HVAC, et cetera. Liz Kelly and I also actually met with them a few months back when we went to a Chamber of Commerce meeting. And so the next step would be to talk to our financial team, because it comes through on the tax bills like a betterment would. But it's like a pass-through, so we don't actually have to do anything with it. And then if it's something that, you know, we're kind of comfortable with on our side, it would actually only require a vote of the select board to basically opt-in to the program. And then we can apply for a project every year. But he did say, given our size, it's typically large commercial projects at this time. Solomon Pond is the only one he has identified in Berlin, but he thought it was a great project. So, let's see. Coffee talk, we'll talk a little bit about with public safety. We talked about doing that, and they've tentatively scheduled that for October 12th at 5:30. We are almost done with the hybrid meeting room upgrades. There were two additional parts that needed to be purchased and installed, and then we'll be doing training. We have, I met with Stephanie Martin, the graphic designer that Peg found on Facebook, to discuss upgrades to the town website. And she's actually put a post out already on Berlin Neighbors Connect to get a sense from the residents of what they like, what they don't like, what needs to be improved, what stinks. I mean, let's, you know, we've got some things we've got to fix.
You mean on our website?
On our website.
What they like, they don't like.
Correct.
TownofBerlin.com.
Yep. Yeah. So she's actually going to be making some of those recommendations, looking at other cities and towns' websites. We sat and went through the website. I pointed out some things, showed her the basic functions of how to go in and change things, which obviously she caught on to, because this is what she does. So I'm excited about that. And Berlin-Boylston Regional School District got a municipal fiber grant, which is really exciting. It will actually be run on the telephone poles from Tejano over to BMS. So we will be working with National Grid. They may need a letter from the select board approving it. We're not sure, because even though the poles are in the right-of-way, the poles themselves are owned by National Grid and/or Verizon. So there's a bit of a question right now as to who has to approve it, if both of us do, or if just National Grid and Verizon do. We're getting close to closing on 72 Carter. Hopefully, by the end of this month, what's holding it up is the courts. The seller has to get permission from the, or go through the whole probate court process for the trust. And lastly, on a personal note, I've been here a year, which I can't believe. It's gone really quickly, but it has been wonderful, and look forward to continuing to work with everybody.
Second budget.
Second budget. It's coming, it's like deja vu. They start coming back around.
Yep.
So lots, I know not a lot on the agenda, but lots going on that are queuing up, that are going to be coming forward. So.
So, do you guys have questions?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I do too.
Can I go first then? Oh, do you want to go first?
Oh, I don't care.
Bullard House and the Historic. You know, they, they started with like, you know, wanting to do some windows and some improvements to the inside and paint the outside. And then it became some, you know, structural building, and then it became the foundation, and then it became the septic, and now it's water flow. It's like now eight projects that have to be done, it feels like, before they get to the thing they started with four or five years ago. I'm wondering what can be done to sort of just encourage them, because if it was me, I'd be getting pretty frustrated that this is the thing I want to do, and the things I now have to do before getting the thing that I want to do, and the things that is visible to the town, and the thing that people think, because people still drive by that building thinking Historic is doing nothing, when that-
Is not the case.
The, the Historic Commission, you know, is working their butts off to try to make all this stuff work. And it seems to get like more complicated. And I read some of those engineering studies, and, you know, I, I have a math and science sort of background. And some of them, and some of those studies, really, I have a hard time digesting. And so I don't know what the answer is, but I think anything we can do to sort of just provide some reassurance that they're doing the right stuff, we get they're working, we get that some of this stuff is really technical and beyond them, and anything we can do to help move that along. Because I think as a town, we really want to see, like, get to those projects that make the outside look better and make the building sort of more, more usable.
Definitely. One of the things I'm trying to help is kind of facilitate the process with procurement, with the architects, the engineers. I am not educated on the technical side, being a generalist myself, but I am very familiar with working with engineers and architects over the years. So I kind of speak that language. So one of the things I've been doing is, the Historical Commission will look at things. They'll have some questions. We've, June and I have been discussing them. We've been sending things back to the architect. And so I'm trying to help facilitate and, and move things along in any way that I can. And, you know, June and I have a great working relationship, and so I think we'll continue to make progress. But it, it is slow, because they keep discovering one thing literally after another.
Right.
And no, as you said, that is not the work they want to be doing. But in order to secure the building, you're not going to put a bunch of money into the interior design of a building, or restoration of a building, before it's structurally sound.
Right. I also question the term flooding of the basement. I think the basement gets damp here and there. But I don't know if there's ever really been standing water.
Sorry, there's, I was told there's water in the basement.
Water can sometimes get in the basement, but it is, well-
It flows downhill. So there's puddles.
Right. But they don't stay long, and they're not giants. Not like there's inches of water ever in, in that basement. Doesn't mean it shouldn't be fixed, but just, I worry that someone's got to take the word flooding-
Sorry. That's fair, especially these days. Fair point.
I don't know any one of us who have fieldstone basements that's ever like 100% dry on summers like we've had this year.
True.
I don't know now or later on the agenda, or I, I'd love to see somehow from the select board, assuming people are on the same page, but that we put together a capital request to remove the brown barn and have a parking lot put down there. I know we've put some ARPA money towards that.
Yeah.
I don't know how much it's really going to take. I don't want us to miss the capital planning season and discover in February that like, that's going to need some, some capital money.
More money.
And that we, we have missed. I don't think, we, although we probably legally could exempt ourselves from deadlines, it just looks bad if we exempt ourselves from deadlines. And so let me know if there's anything more I can do to help sort of move that along.
I can put that together, if that's something-
I think part of the problem is that there's some highway equipment in there. So what are you going to do with it? Do you put it out and let it rust?
Or, or we get, we get rid of some of those things.
Fred's actually working on moving. I actually asked-
Because I thought that's what Ben for a while is, get it out. I don't think there's any-
There's something in there.
I find that sometimes deadlines make things happen. And so we say that building is coming down on April 1st. It wouldn't, because you have to go to town meeting for this. But that building's coming down April 1st, that magically there'll be a place to put it, because we actually have the old highway building that also is sitting empty that probably could store some of that stuff, too.
So I actually reached out to Fred, because I heard the same thing. He said they are using it for storage. All that's in there is the Buffalo Springfield, which he's working with Mike Sawyer to get moved. There are some spare parts for one of the mowers and the old street sweeper in the process of, they are in the process of gathering as much information as they can to list that on municipid. And he said he will find a space to put everything else to free it up.
Right. I think the other problem is the, the storage container down there that has old, somewhat questionable-conditioned bleachers in it that we need to find a home for at some point to-
Sure. Bleachers from-
Have a school bonfire about. But you can't do that these days, though, can you?
That was, wasn't that wood? Were they wood or were they metal?
I thought they were wood. That's why they were-
They were. They were moved.
But they were, they were removed because they were in horrible shape, weren't they?
Right. And so they, but I think they were moved into the building.
I thought they went to the transfer station to-
I could have my stars where I'm wrong. I just, I, I think when getting rid of the brown building, I think getting rid of the storage container next to the brown building, whether that's move it to somewhere else, because it's still needed for storage for the town, or not. And then-
So you're asking for a quote, to get rid of the brown barn?
Yeah, to-
And see whether we're on, on point with it.
Right. Get rid of the brown barn, and for me, replace that space with a paved parking lot that'll have some handicap accessibility to the new courts we have, parking when we have events down there, especially if we're talking about, you know, pavilions and other stuff. Because I think the, the space event is just because it's also dirt and un- Because I think the, the space event is just because it's also dirt and uneven that the number of cars you can get there is probably quite limited. I imagine that we could square off a space and get, you know, maximize, um, uh, the, the parking and cars down there.
I need to look into whether or not we can pave it because it was mentioned to me that there may be a restriction on whether or not we can pave because of green space.
The pond.
Not even the pond, actual like green space that was exchanged for conservation land for something else. So I actually pulled the deed, I just haven't had a chance to look at it yet.
Yeah, definitely get in touch with Conservation and Historic and, um, I believe that the, isn't the power, that there's a power for the lights on the pond that's in that barn?
I don't.
Or it's on the pole outside? I mean, so you might need to look as well.
Right. I know when we went down this path a little bit, I don't, it could be a year ago, it could be six months ago, but I emailed several people, who do Conservation Historic and others, specifically about the brown barn, maybe not about paving, but no one like had any strong, none of that group had any strong love. They all were clear that there have not been formal votes of the various groups, but that as a general rule, there wasn't, the barn is from the 50s, you know, even though it was built in an older style, it is not, you know, historic barn in the town.
I, I think it makes sense to explore and I think in case it costs more, it was one of the things, um, it would make more sense for us to do recreations very focused on the pavilion and the playground and so, and, and this isn't like extraordinarily recreation-focused itself. I mean, it is on the property, but.
Would it make a difference to recreation though if the brown barn was gone about moving the pavilion?
No, I think it's just as much, I don't think it's a recreation project to create that parking lot, I'm trying, because they already have a bunch of.
I'm saying if they, the pavilion, maybe they would leave it.
No, they want the pavilion over by the, the fields. Because that's where the activity is and eventually they'll want to replace the old playground, so everything is on that side of the road.
Right.
That side of the pavilion.
Well, it kind of makes sense when you think about seating because if people are coming to the records, they're generally coming to play, they're not sitting. But parents are sitting while they're watching their kids play on the fields. So that makes sense. There's also the issue of the school playground, um, that can't be used during the day, that if you put a pavilion there, um, you know, the, the principal and superintendent have expressed concern about having to basically chase away people all day long or put up signs and people don't read signs, so they're still going to have to chase people away and, you know, that's not super friendly and nobody wants to do that, so.
Um, my last point is, I, I worry that meeting with the schools is going to be a time sink in their budgets and I don't know if we have, you have to go to like every one of their meetings or even some of the meetings. I think if you have this, uh, work group, uh, they can reach out to us as well.
Yep.
Um, I, I mean, I just, I, I think it's something you potentially spend some of your time on, but that there's only so many hours in the week, there's only so many things going on and I don't know, I, I, I just, and I'm only one person, I don't know how the others feel about it, but I, I want to make sure that schools don't become, school budgets don't become like five to 10 hours of your week.
Yeah.
Because there's just so many other things going on.
I, I appreciate that. One of the things I've been doing is I actually talked to Carol today about getting some type of schedule of when kind of things are going to be discussed and I said, you know, are you guys really doing anything budget-wise? Do I need to come to tomorrow night's meeting? So opening that dialogue and kind of finding out what's going on at specific meetings, I think will be helpful and then I can pick and choose which ones to go to.
Right, because they're, whereas arbiters, but it should be FinCom who sets the budgets and FinComs that works with them. And I just worry sometimes when they try to go through you or sometimes even you to go around FinCom, it's just sort of, we help encourage some bad behaviors here.
It works differently in Boyleston though. FinCom and Select Board work very closely together, so it's just, that might be why they thought of doing it that way.
Well, I think, I think I cleared up what the confusion was today. I think it's because there's that understanding that the school puts the budget on the warrant and what I clarified was the nuance that, well, if the FinCom votes to do something differently, then you end up with two separate budgets. So the whole point is making sure everybody's on the same page, so we don't have to have that.
But I think we got involved a lot because the system broke down and a good system, that the arbitration all happens with FinCom and that we recognizing a problem, us recognize we don't want a chaotic town meeting, sort of stepped in to, to do a lot of stuff that, that helped clean things up, which I thought was necessary, I thought we just want to make sure that we're not regularly playing that role of, of crisis, that somehow we get it so it's regular or stepping on our own FinCom.
Overstepping our boundaries.
Sorry, I've asked a bunch of questions, I, someone else, I'm done.
That's fine, there's a lot in there. Go ahead.
Um, I just had one question and, um, I know I, I, we did get, um, some landscaping done around this building.
That is many thanks to Fred who was out there doing that Friday night at 9:30 when I left.
Oh geez.
While he was on a fire shift.
And, I mean, I, I'm a little concerned about the grounds down at River Bridge too that look horrible. They've got little daffodils that are coming up between the weeds that are this tall. And, and I know they are supposedly responsible, but it, is it something that we need to say, hey, are you going to do anything about this? It looks terrible?
I can certainly bring it up.
Or is it something that, um, we find a way to handle?
Mm-mm.
Well, right, but it could be something negotiated.
Correct. I mean, there were calls in the past that I made to Matt Senni about asking him to pick up the trash on his property as it was blowing from side to side and he was down there, but it took multiple phone calls and texts to ask him to clean up his.
Where is it written that they're responsible for that or is it not written anywhere? I haven't seen it.
I don't think, so it's private property, right? The, and the town would have to have some type of blight by law, which is difficult to enforce.
So it is private property. We haven't accepted it as town property, any of it?
Not that I'm aware of.
The road?
Uh.
I'm talking about like the.
Rotary.
Yeah, the rotaries, the grass and the, I mean, I think our highway takes care of the big rotary.
Yep.
But the other ones, they're, they're horrible.
Three circle.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
And, you know, and I, and I had complained about the landscaping, um, a bit around some of the other buildings in town too, so that's kind of why I brought this up. I don't know what the answer is.
No, I'll look into it though and let you know.
All right. Thank you.
You got it?
Well, that's actually a perfect segue, not planned, but well done.
Thank you.
The River Bridge Agreement, I know that that's the main driver for the delay of not having one in December. Can we get a copy of whatever the current version is because, haven't seen it, would like to see it, would like to try to figure out where the pain points are on that. I don't know if it's been fixed, um, but when you walk out here and you look up right about there, there's water stains on the panels up there, so is the roof leaking? Is it the condenser that's leaking?
I believe it is, is the, this is where my great knowledge of systems comes in, is the condenser connected to the air handler that is waiting to be replaced?
Is that an additional cost to us or was there something wrong when they?
No, we're waiting for the air handler still to come in. It has been on backorder since January and now it's in October that it's supposed to come in, mid-October, um, to the end. But I will double check on those spots that are out there. I thought Fred looked at them, but let me confirm.
Well, the last time we were here, Eric and I walked out and he stood on the little bench out there and touched the panels. He's like, yeah, they're wet. And it happened to be raining last Monday, so like.
The ones that are right by the tre, like by the treasurer's office?
And I think there's another wet spot down the hall as well.
Okay.
All those nice new panels.
Okay.
Um, FinCom, circling back around that, last time we met, um, we had talked about, or that FinCom was going to talk about, um, potential of posting the opportunity out on Facebook, kind of like how I found Stephanie. She just happened to put it out there. I think when posts go out from us that say, hey, there's all these volunteer opportunities, people are like, no. But if there was something that specifically said, hey, do you have a background in, boom, 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 where it's more targeted, that that could go out and there might be somebody in town who might be like, oh, I can do it, but won't bother to look through the multiple, uh, opportunities that are out there for volunteering. You said that that was probably going to be discussed at the last FinCom meeting, was it?
It was. Um, they wanted to put a letter together to the moderator first out of courtesy before they began advertising the position. I have not seen the letter, so I'll follow up with Scott.
Okay. Um, on the hybrid room, you mentioned, hold please, hold please, um, installation pending two final parts. Is that additional cost that we're, for those two final parts or are they, were they part of the original quote and they just weren't in?
Uh, they were, it's additional cost, it's about $300.
Not too bad. And then there were, I know we do correspondences during your session, I just want to make sure that they're addressed, taken care of, not ours, not it. Um, the first one was the noise complaint that came in from a resident regarding work done over at Target and that they weren't notified, so I didn't see any type of follow-up. I didn't know, I just want to make sure that it's where it needs to be, that it's being taken care of.
They were referred to the city of Marlborough, but they still wanted to notify the Select Board, so.
So we don't have anything to do with it? All right, that's one. Um, the Chapter 70 increases, you had received an email from Senator Kennedy's chief of staff saying that the money did come through. So is anything ever given back to the school? Will that make any type of difference on their proposed increases?
So I did actually send all that information over to Nancy at the schools and realized we were talking about two different things. Uh, she was referring, she said there was an increase of Chapter 70 from FY '23 to '24. The part that didn't increase was when the supplemental budget came out last month for FY '24. There was a hope that there would be a significant or somewhat increase in there. So we realized we were talking apples to oranges, so we're all squared away on that now.
All right, and the last email, which I'm guessing is not us, that it's assessors, but again, just want to make sure, um, where someone had written for information on a lien on property?
That's already been taken care of, yep.
Okay. All right, I just get concerned when I don't see anything, I want to make sure that it's not a, oh yeah, I'll take care of that.
I'll try to do a better job at just responding and saying it's taken care of.
Okay, well, I'll just ask him.
If that works too.
And, well, I mean, you could always call her at any time too, you know?
No, I'd rather do it in public so that people understand and it gives you and Scott an opportunity to chime in because I can't do it in email because I don't want to be yelled at for OM.
Well, some of these things I have asked her about, so I already know the answer.
Ah, all right.
So, you know.
I agree, I think Sunday is good in open sessions so that people watching later on know that we follow up the emails that come in.
We, we have to remember, you know, she's the day-to-day person.
Yep, yep.
You know, um, and then all my other questions, I'll wait for another time. Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, well, we have no old business, so we're moving on to new business, um, to appoint Christopher Christiansen Jr. to the cultural council for a term through June 30th of 2024. And everything is, the application was in all in order. It was very nice of him to offer to do this.
Always appreciative of all volunteers, especially, uh, well, I always appreciate all volunteers.
Yes.
And so I will make the motion to approve the appointment of Christopher Christiansen Jr. to the cultural council.
Don't hear a second. Okay. Um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Excellent.
Um, we have on the agenda to approve regular and Sunday entertainment licenses for, is it Du?
Du Portugal.
Du Portugal Circus LLC, uh, for October 6th through the 15th at Solomon Pond Mall on Donald Lynch Boulevard.
Through the chair?
Yes.
Um, we do have a number of, uh, departments that still have some outstanding items that they need, including the food permit, which I know you've been discussing, um, and, uh, Fire, I believe you are all set, we heard back from you. Rich had a tent, um, I believe, issue that he needed to deal with, so I would just ask, um, that when you vote, you just make it contingent upon receiving all of the final sign-offs from the departments.
Okay.
I always wonder if you'd be willing to come down to the hot seat so we can ask you a couple of questions that I promise will.
Would be nice.
Well, it will be nice because I think I'm going to let, set yourself up to.
You can advertise.
Advertise, right. Um, so tell us, uh, what are the days again this is going to be happening on?
The days, it's, uh, from October 6th, which is not this Friday, next Friday, until Sunday 15th.
Yes. That's what I have here anyway.
And then, uh, what type of activities are going to be involved in the circus?
Circus, uh, circus family show.
Okay.
So it's for all ages, kids from any age to, uh, basically for everyone, like a, all like traditional circus show.
Mm-hmm.
We don't have any animals.
Okay.
It's just clowns, jugglers, acrobats, magicians, motorcycles, it's like a family, a family show.
Um, uh, what's the, uh, the sort of price range for tickets?
Uh, tickets go from adults, uh, there is two prices, 25, uh, on general seating and 50 on front row seating.
Yep.
And kids two to 10 years old, they pay 15.
Okay. Um, those are my tough questions.
Whoa, those are so tough. I think he, I think he queued him in.
Yes.
That was nice. Do you have any questions?
No, I, I think it's great that you're putting this here to, to bring some more fun back to the community, so thank you for doing that, I very much appreciate it.
Very glad you did.
Yeah, I, I too, I, I like the things going on, I like more activity at the Solomon Pond Mall.
Yeah.
Um, I, I think there's a lot of upsides. I will make the motion to approve the regular and Sunday entertainment licenses for Du Portugal Circus from October 6th through 15th at Solomon Pond Mall, contingent upon the, the final details with the, the two departments.
Department heads, yeah.
With departments, it sounds like they're well on their way to being done.
Yeah. No, second it.
Okay, then we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Very good, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
We look forward to it.
Thank you.
All right, and now we've, can have a discussion on the agenda for the next Coffee Talk. If we were to do this with the public safety, it would be October 12th at 5:30.
So I didn't know if that was too soon, if we wanted to do it, if we wanted to combine, but you asked me to kind of look into the dates and what they were doing, so it is October 12th, I believe, unless you've changed it.
Nope, the 12th.
Nope.
Okay.
So.
Down in the bay?
Yeah, that, we're, that's what we're thinking, is we're going to do it down in the bay and just invite people in and, you know, pick up some coffee and have something there and see who shows up.
So what do you think?
Absolutely. I mean, why not?
Okay.
Why not?
Yeah.
You good?
Yeah, I don't think we're adding any more to the agenda. I mean, if we make it a formal coffee talk, it could, we start off and we just introduce them and then our part's done.
Well, I mean, think about it. That was the, that was the initial intent of coffee talk, is that we don't put an agenda together.
Right, yeah.
And we just say,
Yep.
come.
Yep.
And have any questions.
Will Lily be there?
Yes.
Okay. I'm in.
No offense, but nobody cares about you. It's only about Lily.
Mike, thank you for being here. We appreciate it. We know that it's a light ride for you, but thanks for driving Lily back and forth. So
My pleasure.
You know.
Should we bring Lily's deputy perhaps as well?
Maybe. Yeah.
You know, until the police dog gets here.
Right.
Lily rules.
Lily, she does.
A little excitement, I'll bring mine.
Lily might still rule even after the police dogs.
And there is a second wannabe fire dog. That would be my little one cameo who shadows Lily. But she's not quite as good as a Dalmatian. She tries, though. She really does. Mostly she just wants to be in the kitchen and eat whatever they drop on the floor.
She hangs out with Lily. She follows Lily and kind of-
Yep. Well, because she knows Lily's going where the food is. So
Yeah.
smart girl.
Yes. Very myself.
So then we'll need to have an agenda posted
Yes.
because I'm assuming that the three of us will at some point.
Yeah, I think also just having it posted allows us to all be there. And if we accidentally talk about something town-related.
Yep.
Right.
Perfect. And we'll just say, open question, open discussion.
Right. Sounds good.
Microphone?
Back one.
Who has a microphone? Like, do you want to come and bring a microphone?
We have one.
Do you have one? Can we borrow it?
Yep.
Thank you. All right.
It could also be at a certain-
Are you going to tape it?
Got to put in a request.
All right, we'll put in a request.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, see, at some point, I think it'd even break down where, after a certain point, it's just a small circle around each of the two chiefs and people can sort of just inform and go back and forth between the two.
Right. It could be very informal. So we'll, we'll, I'll let Kristin talk to you about it if you want.
And that's where they started. They started as relatively informal in 1870 town hall. We might have had a few things to say at first. And then it was, when I say we, I wasn't a Select Board member then.
Right.
You know, it was breaking out in small conversations where you get a chance to do some more one-on-one with the, with the-
Yeah. This was all Pig's idea.
That is true. That it was.
Yes.
So, yeah, I want to stay with the original intent that we don't drive it, we load them up with
I think people-
Chief Mike there and Eric's there
Yeah.
and Fred and everybody. And you've got a question?
Ask it.
Ask it.
Yeah. I mean, I think people appreciated that when we were doing that.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Moving on. Board questions on the agenda or liaison updates?
Start that under the table.
Anybody?
I met, agriculture met last week. You know, they're wrapping up the gardens for the season. They're beginning to struggle a little bit to do with, what about people who sort of abandon their gardens halfway through the years? They're debating on whether or not some of those people are going to be allowed to come back next year. Or I think they've at least decided that people who had the larger, more sort of in-demand plots, if they've abandoned them during the year, that they can only have a regular plot next year to let people who might others. It was definitely higher this year than, than previous years when it came to plot abandon. Some of it is just because you could go, because you didn't have to go down and water every week because rain. That most people, like, some people just got out of the habit of coming down there and just sort of got busy and spaced it.
Mother Nature takes its course.
Yeah, I know. I've, yeah. The amount of, yeah.
No, I did not abandon mine. Mine was clean. I preed mine left and right. I was good.
And because some people don't, you know, those, those then go to seed and then make it harder on the people around them.
Did we get the gate issue resolved?
It was not a big topic out of it that, so my guess is that it's, it's in decent shape. They could use another member on the team as an opening. I encourage them to reach us on social media because it's the three of us posting 17 openings on a regular basis or even, you know, from staff doing it. It just, it doesn't have the same impact as like, I am the chair, I'm a volunteer on this committee, come join me on this committee, I think has more impact. And also, I'd rather see eight posts throughout the month from eight different people talking about eight different openings than us posting a full list on a regular basis. So I'd encourage all of our teams to regulate. If you have an opening, use some social media, talk to some of your friends and neighbors, chat it up during church socials. Come to the coffee talk on the 12th and arm twist people you see into joining your teams. The town works well when we have a wide variety of volunteers working on. Coming up this week, because I have a hard time believing that it's the end of September, the Housing Trust is meeting on Wednesday. And what is exciting this week is that our CMRPC, Central Mass Regional Planning Commission, staff member will be at the meeting to talk to us. And so the person has been hired. I have chatted with her and emailed with her a little bit, but she will be at the team to start actually providing some staffing to it. I have prepped her that like, we have spent the last several months just learning about what other towns are doing, things we can legally do and not do with the money, what we have for plots, what we have for money. And like, using her expertise, I'll bet it's like, let's find something we can sort of kick off. And I think there's a couple of interesting things that have not been voted on, so I won't chat about them here. But, but they'll be, they'll be working on that.
To put a quick bug in your ear or plug, if you will, Tim Wheeler and I were talking about this a little bit last week. I think one of the roles that that housing coordinator can play is helping us navigate all of our various housing groups and who does what.
Yep.
And bringing everybody together and coordinating. So, because we also have the Metro West Housing Partnership with Stephanie Peterson. And so trying to kind of figure out, because sometimes when something happens, we don't always know
Yep.
where the best place is to go. So now we actually have kind of a contact person. They'd be a great contact person in general in housing.
And we've discovered that on the Housing Trust, we're getting started between our Housing Commission and the ACABET Group and the Metro West Group and the Central Media Housing Partnership and even like Habitat for Humanity and the Shoban Neighbors. And, you know, there's a lot of things working and relatively things, similar things out there. And so helping understand when those boundaries are and, and getting the most out of them. Because I know that there's, again, some 40B homes that are for sale currently in the town. That's really more with Stephanie's group than it is more the Housing Trust. But we still want to keep sort of pumping them where we can to find, you know, these are houses looking for, for owners that are good for income-qualified folks.
And those are always tough because we have to be careful about using names and
Yep.
locations and all of that.
Yeah.
But yet we want to keep them in our affordable inventory.
Right.
So that's something, I think, having that impartial third party
Yep.
who can navigate all of that would be very helpful.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that's enough.
I love all your sticky notes.
Yep.
That's awesome.
Yeah. When you start all those, huh?
I always do the sticky notes. It helps me during the meeting to not interrupt so I can write it down. And then it's either relevant or not relevant when it becomes the appropriate tone.
All right. I did go to several meetings over the last two weeks. One was on November, or November, September 12th. And we're not there yet, are we? Which was a very quick 30-minute meeting where the school committee approved some policies and did a first read of two policies. Also went to Planning Board and updated them on, they had asked for someone to come to the Planning Board meeting to talk about River Bridge Lot 6B and plans for 6B. And because Kristin and, and you were at the Woo Sox game that night.
Mm-hmm.
I went to that just to fill the minute.
She took one for the team.
Yes, I did. Then I went to ZBA on the 13th. I think that was, both of those meetings were on the 12th. There were no hearings at the ZBA, however, but Susannah did give an update on, to the planning, of what the Planning Board talked about at their meeting. And next month, there will be a Central Street Car Wash hearing for ZBA. If that's it.
Okay. So REC, very busy. On October 13th, there will be a Halloween costume swap down at South Commons at the gazebo.
Is that a Saturday?
It was a Friday.
A Friday, okay.
I will be donating the 60
Ooh.
costumes that were provided to us from Bellingham. So thank you to Bellingham for doing that, along with a giant box of decorations, which REC will also use for their Fall Fest, which will be held October 22nd, also down there. And they will have a movie night at BMS, also on October 13th, which is Friday. So, and if it's bad weather, they'll probably go inside. So Chief, heads up, might need a body.
Making a note.
Is it going to be a creepy horror movie? Because it's Friday, the 13th in October.
Well, I was hoping for a creepy horror movie, but probably not. I'm sure it'll be something kid-friendly.
What day is the swap?
It is Friday, the 13th of October.
The 13th, okay.
From 3:00 to 6:00. And then the movie night right after with that. So if anyone watching at home has any costumes they would like to donate, drop them off, I think there'll be a box here at the town offices. If not, just bring them down. And I had a neighbor come by today with costume and said, here, I heard you're collecting them. So now I have costumes in the house that I can't fit into, but I've tried. All right. Concom, Highland Ridge, they have a meeting. They're removing the silt sacks to see if that's the cause of the flooding. They don't know. But with Mother Nature raining, I'm sure they'll find out quickly. And EDC, I know that they're starting to talk again about charging stations. So I suggested that they go to the Energy Meeting, which is next Tuesday. Now that we've gotten rid of our electric car, I don't know what that does, if anything, to our green community standing. So maybe if there's electric stations here, I know there was talk at one point about having them
Mm-hmm.
somewhere out there for that. So we'll hopefully get that going.
It'd be good to get that queued up again because last year, there wasn't really a location that had been identified. So when the grant came up and they don't give you that much time, we weren't ready to apply for it. So I think we need a spot, a site, rather. I mean, I think here would be a good site, but I don't, I don't know what energy feels like.
And I think that they're open to it. I think that they were also part of the discussion when it was going to be here because there could be ample parking. It's in a safe environment. You know, it's not behind a building, in darkness. Fires here, police are here, EMS are here. During the day, it's an easy walk to the center of town to go down to the general store, 19 Cara for that. So.
They're really easy applications. And you pair up with like a, not a consulting, I guess they are an electric vehicle consulting firm, who basically will prepare most of the application for you. It's, and it's pretty quick. So I'd love to be able to put one in. I've done a couple of them before and they're great. So.
Well, I'm going to Energy next week. So I'll make, if EDC doesn't show up, I'll bring it up.
They mean Tuesday at 7:00?
See, no, Tuesday at 5:30.
I'm glad I asked. Okay.
There was a request to have them earlier.
Okay.
So it's at 5:30 next Tuesday.
All right. I'll see if I can make it.
And that's all I got.
All righty. Did, before we end this meeting, I was wondering if, when we went to the Council on Aging thing from the UMass, if, if either of you would like to have maybe a discussion on how the board can help further communication or something that seems to be one of the things that came up in the survey, how to get information out to people? Or if you had anything else on the survey that you might want to talk about?
I mean, I think it, I think, I have no problem having a conversation generally about how to get things out.
Yeah.
Because that is one of the things we generally struggled with, getting things out. I think the Council of Aging can have their own conversation about it. I think that they were not mutually exclusive and we probably could learn a little bit from each other.
Well, I think that was one of the things, was that the Select Board information, people feel like they're not getting it. They're not getting enough of it or something. Wasn't there something like that in the-
It was kind of communication from town government in general, I think.
Yes, town government.
It didn't call out Select Board, but it was town government.
Right, right.
Right.
I think redoing our website is a great step in that direction.
That's true.
And trying to make sure that we keep that timely, up to date, and find new ways to put more information on it.
Mm-hmm.
Because just the cost of postage and trying to mail things out